Oh, is he going on? Never mind.
I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for September 17th, 2019. Invite you to stand if you choose. Commissioner Perigent leads us in invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me if you choose. Lord, please provide us with wisdom to make decisions on behalf of our community that will help better us as well as be pleasing to you. Continue to be with those who are rebuilding after the devastating hurricane in the Bahamas and beyond. Also continue to be with those first responders and volunteers who are there to help the displaced. Finally, may God bless and keep our nation as we remember the events of 9/11. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the room.
I pledge allegiance.
Commissioner Nash.
To the flag.
Commissioner Perigent. Here. Commissioner Beasley Brown. Here. Mayor Wilkerson.
Thanks for coming tonight. I think we have some awards or recognitions tonight. Invite Operation Pride to come forward and tell us what's going on. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right.
Sorry, you all. I'll be fairly quick. But thank you all again for letting me come up here and present these awards to you all today. We have a special group today. They are the only one, and they represent our Commercial Pride Award for the month. It's to 1550 West Street, Western Street. And if you all are familiar, it's Keller Williams' First Choice Realty Building. So here is an old picture. So I've heard that this building's been around for a very long time, since before the 70s, I would say. And it was just like an office space. They had like doctors' offices, insurance offices within. And then it sat vacant for a while. And here's pictures of, I guess, the back of the building. And then here's a picture of the inside of the building. So, I mean, it looked good, I guess, on the inside beforehand, but they did an incredible job. So here is the renovation. So, as you can see, it doesn't look anything like what it looked like before. And then on the inside, you can see they put hardwood, hardwood, glass. It's just very beautiful. They have a gym on the inside. They updated the kitchen that's in the inside. And then it just looks incredible. Like, I don't really have to give words to describe how good-looking this one is. This is a lot more evident than some we've given before. But yeah, so here today I have Ms. Edmonds, who she did the communication with me. She doesn't want to be recognized today, but we wouldn't be here right now presenting this award if it weren't for her. And then we have Ms. Kim Williams and her son, Sawyer Williams. And if you all want to come up, I'll present the award to you all today. And Ms. Kim Williams said this took a lot of time, a lot of resources. She lost plenty of sleep for this, so you all give her a good round of applause at the end. But there's the award.
Thanks.
Put it to Keller Williams First Choice.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any comments? Especially want to thank the Williams family. I think Luke's wife, you told me, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it was a tired, dated facility that just didn't attract much attention. And now it's just quite professional and lovely out there. Thank you for the good work on that. Yes, sir.
Long but fun.
Long but fun. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Any other awards or recognitions?
I actually worked in that, the Wright building in the mid-'90s, so spent, spent a lot of hours in that building. So when it was shelved in CPAs, I would like to come see it. So, looks very good. So anyway, I'm sorry.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for letting us come and give these awards, but we have a special one for William. William Henderson IV came to us in June as our intern, and within a day, I think of him being with us, we completely changed the name. So now it's the, it's the Operation Pride WKU Graduate Fellowship for Public-P private Partnerships or Initiatives, and William is the first one. And he is, this was his last day with us, because he's back in school for his senior year, and we're really happy for him. He's a busy man, and he's added a couple of things, which are mentorship programs, right?
Thanks to Dana.
Thanks to Dana. And so we really want to wish him well, but we have a little something for him from Operation Pride.
This is cute.
Yeah. So it's got that on one side, which is 2019 Outstanding Service Award, Operation Pride WKU Graduate Fellow for Public-P private Initiatives. And on the backside, there's some cute pictures. He presents awards. He's goofy. He was at a, one of the neighborhood rallies with Karen and Emily, and he's a member of the Pride family. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
As I asked everybody that takes pictures here, is his picture gonna hang on the wall with a date below it showing when he received it?
Say it again. Sorry.
Is there gonna be a picture hanging on the wall?
Yes, yes. So there'll be a graduate.
With the date of funding.
They'll be framed, like the mayor's.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 2000.
I'll see to that.
2019. Okay.
2019. I'll take care of that, Commissioner.
Okay. Person 100 years from now can come and look at that picture.
It's gonna make me cry every time I see it, but yes, I'll put it there.
Well, he's a distinguished young man.
Thank you. You all taken care of. I appreciate you all.
Thank you so much. Mayor, don't be in need for closed session. Ashley will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101B for discussion about the sale of real property by the city as publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be sold.
Second. By Perigent, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Any other comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting from September 3rd, 2019?
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Denning. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-160.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Joseph Schmidt to the position of Code Enforcement Inspector in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
Recently had a resignation in our Neighborhood and Community Services Department and the Code Enforcement Office, and I'd like to ask Aaron Holsley to come up and make a recommendation for a hire for this position.
Good afternoon. As mentioned, we had a resignation with a Code Enforcement Inspector. Included in the memo that I presented with you are some of the job descriptions and duties and responsibilities. We advertised the position and received 28 applications, and we interviewed eight individuals. One of those individuals is already employed with the City of Bowling Green in the Parks Department as a facilities maintainer in the Cemetery Division. Prior to that full-time position, just last fall, we appointed him to that full-time position. He was in a part-time position with the Parks Department prior to that. And before that, he has been an instructor, a college instructor with several different colleges and universities prior to that. So I would like to ask you to approve the promotion for Joseph Schmidt into this position.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations, Joseph. Happy for you. Thank you so much. All right. Municipal Order 2019-161.
Municipal Order authorizing accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2020-09 for the purchase of two fire apparatus for the Fire Department from Finley Fire Equipment of McConnelsville, Ohio in a total amount of $1,531,517.62.
Second.
Nash, second by Perigent. Mr. Mizel.
So remember, back in our budget discussions for FY '20, we talked about the purchase of these two fire apparatus. One was an aerial truck. The other one was an engine. We went, the Fire Department went out for bid, only received one bid, and that bid was a little bit higher than we expected and was over budget. So Chief Coulson went to work, went into negotiation, and whittled this thing down. We were able to chisel $40,000 off the price by making some modifications and entering into those negotiations after the sealed bidding. This is all in compliance with KRS. They offered us some trade-in allowances on these two vehicles, but we do not feel those were worthy to accept, so we have turned those down. We feel like we can get more from other routes, such as gov deals or other places for these trucks that will eventually be disposed of. So recommending acceptance of this bid from Finley Fire Equipment, we got it down to $1,531,000, which was just $6,000 above budget. And we feel like once we can get the other trucks sold, we'll make up for that difference, and it'll all come in under budget. So recommend approval of this bid. And Chief Coulson is here to answer any questions you might have.
They're gonna paint them black? Or any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Since this is such a big-ticket item, can you just talk a little bit about what an aerial is, and then maybe why the ticket is, price is so high, and maybe how it's different than purchasing a regular car off a lot in terms of the, you know, the barriers we have to pricing?
Okay. Essentially, is a, an aerial is a fire apparatus equipped with some type of ladder device. So this particular truck will have, it's 107-foot extension ladder basically mounted on top of the truck. So the reason these trucks are in excess of a million dollars is quite simply because it has a lot of moving parts. You know, it has, the motor or the engine itself is near $100,000. Of course, it's a custom-built apparatus, so you know, it all has to be fabricated. The transmission is $30,000, $40,000. And then, you know, all these, all these parts add up pretty quickly when you start, you know, adding all the components that are necessary for this. The, the trucks itself, or the ladder trucks, we slate them to be in service 20 years for us. We typically, and that's contingent on wear and tear, maintenance costs, mileage, use, lots, lot of factors. And we rely on the Fleet Division. They have a point system that dictates whether to replace those annually if funds are available. So this, the truck that this is replacing obviously falls in those parameters. So with that, we will, we will keep them in frontline service about 15 years, 12 to 15, again, depending on several factors. And then they will go into reserve status for another five to eight years, and then eventually fade off our books, per se.
Well, my daddy always told me that you should always buy a used car. So can you tell me about, do we have that option to buy a used, lightly-used fire truck and save a couple hundred thousand?
Those are, those are extremely hard to come by. I think, based off my experience, lightly-used fire truck or a fire truck that is, for sale is used and only a few years old generally has some significant problems, or, you know, it's, you know, not quite the same. Or the customers have had a bad experience with that apparatus. I think I've, you know, I'm familiar with a ladder truck that became available after a fatality related to the use of that truck, and the department no longer wanted to utilize that apparatus. So to find a used, to find a fire truck that doesn't have at least, you know, 10 years of use on it is very rare, especially a ladder truck, because most departments operate under that model, that, you know, we want to keep this in service for a really long time.
And you said the one that we're replacing is 20 years old?
We are, the, basically, we're replacing a 2007 that's in frontline service. It will go into reserve status to replace a 1999 model, which is at its 20-year mark and has, you know, 130,000 miles on it, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll answer your questions. It's a good question, because I use that in, in, when I make talks about finances in, for the city, and we talk about how much fire trucks cost. And I said, they're all custom-built. You have to tell them exactly what engine and pumps and so forth. You just don't go to the fire truck store and say, I'll take the red one. It just doesn't work that way.
No, it's all the way down to seat colors and interior colors. It's, yeah. So, and definitely black over the red is the way to go.
It probably added a million dollars to the cost.
Paint it black.
Anyway. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-162.
Municipal Order authorizing accepting bid number 2020-17 for a vacuum truck for the Public Works Operations Division from Wayne Supply Company of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $438,530.
Second.
First by Nash, second by Perigent.
Yes, we are buying another expensive truck, but this one is needed as well. This is a vacuum truck for Public Works Operations Division. We have one in operation, but any time it could go down and we were without a truck. So we, we thought in the budget for FY '20, we budgeted for another additional vacuum truck. These get used pretty heavily. We went out for bid, and we got two bids, one from Wayne Supply and one from Jack Daheny Companies. Wayne Supply offered us another option with a gasoline-powered engine in it instead of a diesel-powered, and that cost came in at roughly $18,000 less. And according to Chris Crowe in Fleet, this gas-powered engine is still well-suited for operating this truck, and is worth the savings that we can capture here on the front end. So Public Works is recommending to accept the Wayne Supply gasoline engine option of the 438-530. Greg Meredith is here, if you have any questions on this, but recommend your approval.
Vacuum truck for the storm water management cleanout that we have such a great need for here. Any comments or questions?
I was just gonna ask if Greg could explain what a vacuum truck is, and, yeah, why it's important for our community, like the mayor said.
Oh, yeah. Good point. And so this would be the community's second truck. As you know, we're continuing always to add infrastructure, new subdivisions, which have new drop boxes. We added, most recently, a large storm water improvement, storm water treatment plant, facility at Whiskey Run. It's not a storm water treatment plant, a water treatment plant, but it collects solids that come out of the city's drainage system before it goes in the river. So with this new vac truck and all the new infrastructure we're adding, we're probably gonna have, as long as both trucks are up and working, a couple of crews running all the time to try to help make sure that storm drains aren't stopped up and that when we have flooding events, that it's not because of a drawwell that, that hasn't been maintained. So this is overall, you know, just an additional maintenance vehicle to help keep the storm drains clean and the boxes clean, the pipes cleaned under driveways, et cetera.
Come answer your question.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-163.
Municipal Order accepting and ratifying actions of the city officials in executing a grant agreement among the Bowling Green-Warren County Regional Airport, the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration for the construction of Taxiway A.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Denning. Mr. Mizel.
Airport has received news that they can receive this Federal Aviation Administrative Grant for rehab of Taxiway A. I guess that would be Runway A. They're gonna completely rehab the runway with new pavement, lights, signs, markings. And, but we have to partner in with them. So the way it usually works is FAA pays for 90%, the state pays for 5%, and then the city and county split the other 5%, 2.5% each. Our 2.5% here is, equates to $211,436. That is slightly over what we budgeted, but we think we can find the difference in contingency. It's, I think it was $5,000 or $6,000 over, Katie?
Eleven thousand.
Sorry, 11,000. We'd budgeted roughly 200. So with this match of 211, this will help nail down that grant from FAA and help the airport get that runway rehabbed and in operation. And behind that is the agreement with, with the FAA. So I don't know if Susan's here or not, but she's not. But we can, if you have any questions, we can try to get to Susan and get back to you, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Comments or questions?
One comment or question. Mr. City Manager, you might want to explain the relationship the City of Bowling Green and the County of Warren has with their airport pertaining to projects out there.
It's, it's a joint, joint city-county agency. They are on our agency funding. We provide funding. The county provides funding. I think it's pretty equal. But any, any kind of grant that they come through with is most, we most often have to participate at this 2.5% rate. And so we share jointly with the county on the infrastructure and investment at the airport. And that's the reason they come to us with this grant match. It's our responsibility to fill that extra 5% in that the feds do not cover and that the state does not cover as our regional city-county airport. I think Runway A is the longest of the two runways. It runs parallel, parallel to Lover's Lane, and the other one runs perpendicular to Lover's Lane.
I'll answer your question. Call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-164.
Municipal Order approving payment-in-lie-of-taxes agreement among the City of Bowling Green, the County of Warren, the Board of Education of Warren County, and Georgia Pacific Consumer Operations LLC related to an expansion of Georgia Pacific.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, Georgia Pacific recently announced their expansion. Their construction is already underway. I was out there just recently. They've broken ground and are underway on the front part of their building. They are, they have issued industrial revenue bonds through the county, much like we did with the WKU Student Life Foundation recently. And so with these bonds, the $110 million of bonds puts them into the, the situation where, given that they're under an industrial revenue bond, that property will be deeded to the county until the debt is paid off. And when that happens, the property comes off of the tax roll. And so the county, or the, the company voluntarily agrees to still pay us a little bit of property tax, even though it's off the tax roll. And that's what the payment-in-lie-of-tax agreement represents. So before tonight, we've got one. For the first two years, we have agreed to abate any property taxes just on the expanded part of their facility. Their existing ability, existing facility will continue to pay property taxes based on its assessment. And given, starting in year three, city and county will each get 50% of their due property taxes. And then after year 10, we'll go back to 100% on this pilot agreement. Schools will get 100% all the way through from start to finish. And the PVA will track the value of the existing facility versus the value of the expanded facility, and it will all get calculated correctly. This goes with 50 new jobs they're bringing to the community. So this is well worth the, the task and the effort put forth here. And Meredith Rozansky is here, too, if you have any questions on this project. She's worked closely with Georgia Pacific in getting these industrial revenue bonds issued.
Comments or questions?
I would love to hear from Meredith a little bit more about the program. If you could just sort of explain what a pilot program is. And I know on page five of our memo, it talks about how we do have some measures in there in terms of they give us incentive if they bring the jobs. So if you could talk a little bit about that, too.
Absolutely. In the state of Kentucky and in several states, you can negotiate for economic development projects, those projects that are with targeted companies. So those that do more than 50% of their business outside of our area, therefore growing the overall pie for our region. A payment-in-lie-of-taxes agreement is a very standard sort of operating procedure from an economic development standpoint in the state of Kentucky. It has to be tied to an industrial revenue bond. So for our larger projects, those that are typically over $10 million, we offer to them that they can use this mechanism to finance their project. And as a result of that, we can then negotiate a payment-in-lie-of-tax agreement. And so, and it's something we've done with pretty much all of our large projects that we've had over the years. With this particular one, it is on a 10-year basis. So the first two years, as Mr. Mizel pointed out, is 100% abatement and then 50% for the next eight. And that will facilitate a $95 million capital investment in our community and 50 new jobs at Georgia Pacific, which is a great win for us. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Really appreciate the partnership with the city and county, because without you guys, we wouldn't be able to do these.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-40.
Ornance rezoning real estate. Ornance rezoning attractive land containing 0.2397 acre from RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential to GB General Business located at Zero Whispering Hills and Russerville Road, presently owned by Elite Properties LLC, care of à la talisse.
Second.
Ashima Perigent. Motion by Parigin. I'll second it to get it on the floor. This is a rezoning recommendation that came from Planning and Zoning Commission where they voted two times. First time was a tie. And just for my benefit, you don't have to vote after that. If they're that torn about it, it's not necessary to make them go through that effort anymore, but that's up to y'all. I know the law permits that. But we're happy to take a look at a non-recommendation as well as a recommendation, 'cause that's our role and part of it. I know there's several people here tonight with regard to this particular rezoning recommendation. And just need to remind you that what we have to vote on tonight is the record that is in front of us. So if there's anybody new that is interested in speaking, I have to deny that request. But those people who have, who spoke at the original hearing are welcome to come up and summarize their comments if they, if they have a desire to do so. But understand that we have reviewed the material and the, and the record that was presented for us. Again, this is a quasi-judicial situation and not a typical political thing where you can lobby one way or another. We have to make our vote based upon the record that was here. Is Mr. Taliis, is he here? Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I looked right over you. I thought, I saw you earlier, I couldn't, couldn't. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make before I open it up to the rest of the individuals? Okay. Well, we'll let you make an opening comment and then I'll listen to them and then we'll give you that opportunity to close there at the end.
Good evening, everybody.
Remind you the same thing, if you can speak about anything that you had spoke about before, but we can't entertain any new information.
After, so I got, I bought that lot on the corner of Whispering Hills and Russellville Road. And my intention is to have a owner-operator pharmacy. I'm a pharmacist and I work for a corporate. So my plan is to come back to town. I live in Bowling Green. So my plan is to put a local pharmacy to serve our community. 'Cause I worked in Bowling Green for almost six years before I had to move with the corporate to Central City. So I applied for rezoning back June the sixth. And then there were some recommendations, some notes from the staff, from the commissioners to adjust like the height of the building, the material, like some stuff. And so I had to withdraw the application and then re-apply it again, but taking into consideration everything that was suggested and advised. So it can comply, it will comply with the ordinance and all the regulations, taking into consideration safety and traffic, which I think they were like the two main concerns for the residents, which I do respect every single one of you. So after, after vote and discussion, I think to almost like an hour, we, we came to a result where the recommendation was to move forward and rezone it. And that's what I ask your committee tonight is to give me the opportunity to add one, another one, local business, 'cause I believe this is where our strength in our community is, is the local businesses, the people that work hard, wake up every day, go to work, and take care of their own business. They don't have to clock out at five o'clock, but they stay to make sure they better serve our community. So if you all have any question, any concern, I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Any question from a member of the commission, Joe?
Yes, sir. How long have you had the lot?
The lot, I've owned it since, I think we closed on it in May.
May of this year?
This year, yes, sir.
Okay. And as I understand from the documents and everyone else, you're planning on putting a drugstore there?
Correct, yes, sir.
This particular property sits right on the corner of Russellville Road and Whispering Hills Boulevard. If I understand it, traffic from your building will have to come out on Whispering Hills. Is that right?
Yes. If you want me to, to explain it, after talking with the Kentucky Department of Transportation and the Department of Transportation in the city, they came to a suggestion where to have the entrance from Russellville Road, like one in, one out, with only right on Whispering Hills. And it's just like kind of right on the corner, which will not drag any traffic at all into the neighborhood. So anyone that wants to come to my property, to my business, they're not gonna go into the neighborhood, 'cause there's a, there's an island in the middle where they have to go basically, make a U-turn and come back. For that issue, it's, there's not, there's not gonna be any entrance from Whispering Hills. So yes, sir, it's gonna be just an exit and it's only right. And one of the commissioners suggested that we put a curb on, on the left side, which it's kind of, it forced everyone leaving the property is just to take a right turn and not go in the, you know, the opposite way. And plus a recommendation, talking with the, with the Bowling Green Park and Dracks, I think is what you call it, is to see.
Public Works.
Right?
Public Works.
To see if, if they allow me to put, add some landscaping into that island in the middle of the road, across the street, just kind of, you know, to block it so people don't go, which I actually just looked today, there's some poles, so it's impossible somebody like cross the road. It's, it's like just a dead end there.
I have a little problem with planting the trees and bushes up near entrances and exits. We don't wanna overdo that. Number of people that you have in mind to work there at any one time? The number of people?
Okay. Based on the hours of operations that, again, I had to adjust, it's, it's gonna be from eight to six. It's gonna be me and one employee, like one technician. It's a, it's, it's not gonna be a chain pharmacy, it's just one local pharmacy. Hours of operation will be from eight to six.
I guess my next question is for planning and zoning. Come up, my friend. This particular location, the gentleman said that traffic is going to enter off of Russellville Road into a drive to the building, to the drugstore. As one comes off of Russellville Road, what is that car, what car, what is that direction that car should take after it gets in on the property? We're not gonna have, and I'm sure, a line backed up towards Russellville Road waiting on to get to the window. Am I right?
So, yes, so the concept plan that the applicant supplied to the Transportation Cabinet, who reviewed it also, Bowling Green Public Works, shows two one-way lanes into the parking area into that lot. One of those lanes would turn into that pickup window, and then the other lane would be the bypass lane and/or area for parking. There is a stacking, space stacking requirement, the zoning ordinance for a pickup window, that is three spaces, so they do have that adequate stacking there as well.
You know roughly the distance from the end of Whispering Hills to the exit of the shop, of the lot?
I do not. Let's see, I can estimate it here. It appears to be roughly fifty to sixty feet.
And it's too close to Veterans Boulevard for a light.
That is my understanding, yes.
That's all I've got right now. I may have another one before we close out.
Any other questions from Ms. Taliis, from our commission? Okay, Ben, I think we've got another question for you, please, sir.
Sorry, I was trying to verify our distance, make sure I measured correctly. What was the question?
Ben, can you talk to me about the variance that was offered in addition? So can you, can you talk to me and the public about the intent of a variance? Why the variance would be the distance that it is? And then what modification has been made to the variance?
So a variance is intended to grant relief from my strict reading of the zoning ordinance. So in this particular case, it's the distance from a commercial property to a residential properties, property needing to be forty feet. And then also the distance between a pickup window and a residential property being a hundred feet. So the nature of a variance is that there is a unique circumstance or some special condition that exists in order to grant generally relief from the strict reading of that ordinance. So in this case, it would be potentially the, the small nature of the lot, the depth of the lot being shallower than most commercial lots. 'Cause again, in this case, the variance comes after the zone change. And then also the existence, possibly the utility lines and easements limiting the development of that lot. So those are all potentials. So what was granted for this lot? In the incompatible use section of the zoning ordinance, that says a commercial building cannot be any closer than forty feet to a residential property line, Mr. Taliis asked for a ten-foot. So there was a thirty-foot variance to allow it to only be ten-foot from the property line. And then the pickup window was very, very similar. So it was a requirement of a hundred feet and asked for an eighty-foot variance to only be twenty feet from that property line. So that was the two, the two variances that were granted with this property.
So I wanna make sure I understand. So I'm gonna repeat it back to you to make sure that we're on the same page. I learned that from a judge that I work for is to say it back so that, so that everybody's on the same page. And that is that once the zoning was changed, then the variance comes up. Because the zoning was changed, you had to go to the incompatible chapter to get to the variances. And in one case, we've altered the variance ten feet, and in another case, we've altered the variance eighty feet.
Thirty and eighty, but yes.
Thirty and eighty.
To allow ten and allow twenty.
That's correct. Sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Why would one do that?
That, the application was considered as a whole with the, with the, the planning commission is allowed to hear the variance along with the application. So the only answer for that I have is the majority of the planning commission made a positive recommendation for you to decide on.
Understand. Did property owner, did he meet with you in advance of coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Correct, yes. April twenty-ninth was our pre-application date.
And how did that meeting go?
Well, at that meeting, typically what we do is we go through all of the regulations that might apply to that property. We go through the process and then we advise them of all the things that might apply and then how, help them figure out how they may address those, those particular concerns. Then they create their application, they submit that, and then we review that initially and then have a second round of correspondence with them to try to, try to help facilitate that application before the planning commission.
And did, I, I know that at that meeting, you don't provide a recommendation to the property owner.
That is correct. It's generally in the form of suggestions.
And were there suggestions that were made to the property owner at that time?
Yes, there's almost always suggestions made to them, yes.
Were those positive or negative related to the rezoning of the property?
Generally, we always try to stay positive and just simply identify what challenges may present themselves, either positive or negative. So usually it's a little, little of both, but they certainly, certainly identified the variances. We certainly identified, you know, everything that you saw in the, in the staff report and asked them to address those. And ultimately, it's the applicant's burden of proof to both the planning commission and ultimately this body to, to prove that they meet the majority of those items that are important.
Thank you. I reserve time later for comments. Now we're open it up to those individuals that came specifically for this particular hearing. And again, I would remind you, if you have any comments, that you have to keep them within the framework of what you said in the previous one. If you need to summarize those for us, you're welcome to. Is there anyone that would like to do that?
And only the ones that spoke at the prior meeting, you know, where someone new cannot come to the mic and talk about this project.
That's correct. It would be considered additional evidence that we would not be able to consider. So if you spoke again at the first meeting, you'd be allowed to speak at this one. It's not, it's not a second bite at the apple, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, Mr. Williams? We're, we're just letting you summarize your comments. You've already been sworn on your testimony previously.
Okay. I know we met June the sixth at planning and zoning. We got it turned down then. And the last time, it was a tie vote. But then they changed the vote within, they did a second vote at that time and it, two people changed. But I'd like to read something within the daily news yesterday.
Well, you can't add anything from, from your testimony. All you can do is summarize what you told us before. So don't, don't go to something else.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's not true, you know, what they're doing. What the biggest problem there is safety. I mean, it's coming off of Russellville Road, you're coming towards Bowling Green, you've gotta cross traffic, get in, coming the other way, you get in. And then if you come out on Whispering Hills Boulevard, it's still a safety hazard, 'cause there's a lot more traffic. And I watched a lot of time and other people have. The transportation park apartment was out there part of the time, but they didn't spend that much time out there during the day where in the afternoon, it's lots of traffic. And then if you try to get out, it's almost impossible on a work morning. Now, what is the question is, is to, what is the distance you have to be from another traffic light to, see, we don't have one. And I've been in cities before, it's closer distance, they do have traffic lights closer than what we have and where we're at.
Generally, it depends on the speed limit. In the case of Russellville Road, the speed is, speed limit's forty-five. So generally, that distance need to be twelve hundred feet, so.
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred feet.
I don't know exactly how I measured. Have y'all measured it from the Russellville Road or Veterans Boulevard to there?
I don't, I don't think that's twelve hundred feet. It's not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause this is a dangerous place. I know about five or six years ago, I was coming out, somebody ran a light and hit me on the driver's side. I'm just lucky to be here now. And other peoples have accidents there too. And on the Whispering Hills exit, I know you say you're gonna fix things up, but that will take away from the Whispering Hills subdivision. If you put extra things in there and take away the sign and everything. And let's see, talking about pharmacies, good that you're putting one in. But you got four pharmacies close But you've got four pharmacies close by. You've got Spring Hill.
That wouldn't be a consideration that we could could entertain.
Okay. I just had four in that area, I mean. And but parking spaces was the other side. I think you only had, what, three? Five? But then how are you going to park in those spaces with people coming all the time? Will there be a problem there?
And Mr. Williams, I know it's tough. You just have to summarize your comments from the previous one. We're not adding evidence.
And that's one of the concerns, you know. And also, it's been rumored going around that the neighbor or someone will have a parking place for the, you know, employees. Okay, okay.
Just stick with what you said before. Just summarize that for us.
But let's see. With that amount, it's dangerous. What I'm saying, the big thing is safety there because you came up there. A lot of people go right instead of left. At the morning, you have to go right almost every time to get on Russellville Road. People go down, get in the medium and turn in the exit where all the storage houses are and then come back out. Or some people go down west on Russellville Road and maybe make a U-turn if no traffic come. I know it's illegal, but that's the only way they can get out. And we're very concerned about the safety of the kids and stuff like that are out there. You know, that might get killed or something like that. Or anybody trying to get on and somebody comes through the light real quick and hit them. That's about all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm sorry to be tard on you there. Is there's any other individual that spoke at the last hearing that would like to summarize their comments? I'm sorry. It would have to be her. I apologize. This that's the way the law is. It makes it difficult. Was there anyone else? You're welcome to come and summarize your comments if you like.
Mr. Rutledge, right? Make sure that I remember what I said. The traffic is the main thing, the getting in and out. Hope I'm not in contempt of saying this, but you know how that is out there because you used to live there. So.
Sure. Fifteen years.
Yes. So and it's worse now. So anyway, that's the that's the main thing. The in and out, trying to get in to the subdivision. Well, actually getting into the subdivision is not bad if you're coming from town. But if you're coming from, say, Russellville, you have a little problem because you've got everybody coming off of Campbell Lane. You have them coming off of Veterans and you have them coming off of Russellville Road. So you've got four, three lanes of traffic trying to come through at the same time. And they use their red light, right turn like crazy, and you still can't get out. So that's the biggest thing right there, especially getting turned left and everything. So and then the maybe some added traffic that might come through the subdivision and everything because we have a lot of fast drivers that like to go down that road and everything. So but that's basically the thing is the traffic and and trying to get in and out and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Appreciate it.
Can I ask Greg a question? Can I ask Greg a question? It it seems like this is a problem in a in a lot of neighborhoods where, you know, we're just main neighborhoods are loading into really busy roads like Russellville Road or Campbell Lane or name them Nashville Road. Is there a is there a way to add a turning lane to to be able to get people that want to turn right, outturning right, you know, like we're going to do on Small House Road? Just to add a lane towards the end right up on Russellville Road where maybe two cars could get in that could turn right and not hold everybody up from that wants to turn left and wants to wait it out to be able to do that?
Sure, there is. It's just a matter of of putting the infrastructure in place. If you have room and if there aren't utilities that are significant in the way that are cost prohibitive. So.
I don't want to put you on the spot. I was wondering if we could take a look at that.
It's location driven, really. It it depends on where you're at, but there are circumstances that you could do that and circumstances you couldn't. You know, a lot of the urbanized areas where we need turning lanes the most are the most heavily developed already. So either somebody has a plan for a lot and and we'd have to purchase right away, which may change their plans for the lot. I'm not sure here how much that would impact what he's suggesting to do. But there are all kinds of factors and and generally, it's not just the cost of the construction. It's other costs that are added on to it.
I'm wondering if we could get out there and take a look at that.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I understand I I I used to have to go left on Nashville, on Highland to Nashville Road every single day. And yeah, there's a.
Other example.
Right. It's it's a it's a real challenge. So certain times a day. Thank you.
I'm the adjacent property owner to the proposed lot, and I'm at one oh four Whispering Hills Boulevard. Summary of my comments were is this, does everybody have this particular future land use map? All right. So that line was drawn. I don't know when. I didn't bother to look it up, but it was just drawn. There was no thought made to that line. It went right through somebody's house. Now, mine still falls under the multi-use deal, and I knew that when I purchased the house as an investment for rental property. I am going to have a real problem with a building that is put so close to my house. And the variance that was made was done with little fact, in my opinion. It was just done. That was my summary then. I'm a little more educated on it now in the fact of you could put a building so close to a residential unit. The drive-through situation, not having a speaker is is mainly the reason why you're allowed to do that. But to put a building this close to a residential unit when no real thought was made to this line seems to be the summary of my comments made. And I hope the best for Mr. Al. I've had a lot of conversations with him. That is going to be a tough pharmacy, thousand-square-foot building. So close to Russellville Road with hard in and out of that particular facility. And I think that there's a reasonable rate, a reasonable situation where that building is vacant in the next five years. Although I wish him the best of luck. Then I'm sitting there with the vacant building right next to my residential house. And then the value of the house is just completely tanked. We'd like to keep our property values in Whispering Hills. And this was a comment that was made by several of the people that aren't here tonight is we don't see how this benefits the neighborhood in any way.
I got distracted during Parker comments. Tell me again about the line. What is it?
Arbitrary line.
What are you talking about arbitrary line? I missed.
When you look at the line that they drew and it's got the gold and the red.
Okay, hang on a second.
The gold line goes right through my neighbor's house. There was no thought as to whether this is a neighborhood or a vacant lot? Or what is there currently when this line was drawn?
I I'm confused as to why your line is an issue. This is just a map. The true layout of the property comes with a survey. So I don't understand why the coloring on the map.
This this is the future land use map. It's just a general guidance. It's not a it's not a hard line.
Do you know that when this was done? I didn't bother to look it up because I don't think I can fight it anyway, but.
Yeah. Six or seven, around in there.
Thousand and seven?
Thousand and seven, you went ahead and just drew this line right through a neighborhood.
Two thousand, well, let me stop you. In in two thousand and seven, I didn't draw a line through any neighborhood.
Okay.
In two thousand and seven, I lived in this neighborhood.
Okay.
So what this map is, though, for clarification, is it is it is a map that multiple people worked on to determine what they thought property would be in the future as a guide. The intent of the map was that it would be revisited on an ongoing basis to make refinements to the map. That has not always occurred. The lines that go directly through properties really don't indicate anything specific other than in some areas, it's supposed to be residential. And in this case, they marked it as mixed use. But it doesn't mean that that particular property was going to be actually split in half with it being multifamily or high density and the other half being mixed use. The the coloring of the map was just a guide to be used. Now, the specific properties, like those that are bordering Russellville Road from the future land use map, from just a predictive standpoint, were indicated to be mixed used. But it the the colors in the lines, and I get that that can be confusing and infuriating. I'm on board with you on that. But I don't want you to think that whoever drew the line, I'd like to remind you, wasn't me, did not intend to split that property in half.
Okay.
All right.
I'm not here.
Sure.
I have to do that. So the first first sentence in the mixed-use residential category. So mixed-use areas taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential in a variety of housing types, densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, civic uses. So while the line is arbitrary, does go through a building. It could be a single-family residential. It could be multifamily, or it could be retail. So that just sets the, as as Commissioner Nash said, the general guide for what it could be, not necessarily what it is or what the application is for. So it could mean single-family residential as well.
May I ask a question? As a previous resident of Whispering Hills, did you ever have a homeowners association?
You can't consider that as part of our deliberation. That's a reasonable question if you want to ask.
Not that I was that I'm aware of. We had a group of people that met, but I don't believe that we met the the formal criteria. I point at Brent because he's in 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 neighborhoods and communities. But but we did have a group of people that met on an ongoing basis, mostly related to the pool.
Oh, okay, the pool.
Yes. But but we met about other issues as well.
Okay. I'm thinking we're well past the time that we needed to form a HOA and hire a lawyer to be able to fight this. I don't know that I would think the rest of the neighborhood behind me would want to file an extension to possibly get a lawyer to help us facilitate that, but I'm guessing we're well well past that time.
I will tell you, the process from tonight, either passing or failing, is not a final decision. That would come at a second reading. This is a for an ordinance requires two readings. The first one doesn't count anyway. But the second vote is the one that counts, and that would be at the next meeting in October.
October.
Yeah, yeah.
First Tuesday, October.
There we go.
All right.
Can I speak to the homeowners association thing? As far as I know, I don't know for my neighbors behind me how long they've been there, but I've been there since I was two years old. So about fifty years is how long I've lived there. And I don't recall ever having a homeowners association.
All right, before I get to you back, Alan, is there any other member of the community that spoke at the hearing that wants to summarize their comments? All right, that portion of it is done.
Can I have to say seven minutes?
Well, you already had your shot. What do you got?
Well, I'm just going to say a lot of people of age lived in there.
That was in your comments too.
We have Dr. Blue here, a patient here, Richard. A lot of those people, a lot of those people are aged on, staying up until eight.
Okay, all right.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. And they were written in your comments here. We had we have a summary of your comments as well. All right, Alan, do you have anything else you want to? Wait a minute, before we go any further, does anybody have any questions for any of the individuals that came up? Alan, do you have a final comments for us then?
Sure. Thank you so much for for the comments they they made and for giving this time. I just want to address some of the the points that they didn't address tonight. The the traffic issue. I mean, Russellville Road is is a busy street. You know, having the Western and having New School and and now we have an I sixty-five. I mean, it's it's a busy street. And after talking to the Department of Transportation, what would be the best to, you know, for the safety of the neighborhood and my clients and even the people using the Russellville Road? It was to use a one, one in, one out. The the exit on Whispering Hills was intended that basically to make those people wait until it's safe to leave the property, you know, like to take the the Russellville Road. The about the variances that Mr. Nash asked about. And Mr. Ben, maybe can correct me on that. Usually, if you have a speaker, that's usually like the biggest issue. But since it's it's a pickup window, which I intentionally applied just to be a pickup window because for two reasons, not to bother neighbors and the HIPAA regulations. It's basically the privacy of the information of how many times you're, let's say, at McDonald's. You're in your car and you hear the order of the person in front of you. What about, you know, health information? So for that for that intention, plus to respect the privacy of of the neighbors, we did the just pickup window. No speaker will be installed. The the distance between the house, the one oh four and this property, we agreed to put a fence, I think it's eight-foot fence, that's going to be a wood fence with landscaping, you know, to basically enhance the the like the look and plus to prevent any kind of bothering to the to the adjacent. Which I I would like to add, I've already talked to the owner of of that property and we just inspected the roof. I'm actually buying that property. So this way, it's it's going to be my own property as well. No intention to rezone, and you can hold me for this. I see the cameras are recording. There will be no intention in the future to rezone that house.
I think what you're talking about there is information that was not in the hearing. So I don't believe we can consider that. I know there was some discussion about the house next door, wanting to park there, but then you'd have to rezone it and all that. So.
Yes, I think Rachel addressed that. She said it has to be rezoned. So that was completely dropped. Considering buying the house is is basically to, you know, make that buffering distance between my property and any any property in the back. Last point, and I promise it will be the last point, is is about the the traffic exiting the the property onto Whispering Hills. Because you asked about the distance, like how far, I think Mr. Nash asked, how far, Mr. Joe. I I was just there and I wanted to basically take, you know, like find a look before I I head here for any questions. Really, if you leave the property, there'll be just one car at the stop sign in year the next. Like any traffic that will be on my property will not cause any kind of traffic on Whispering Hills. As you know, you're you're going into Whispering Hills. You will have to wait for the residents basically to leave on my property. With that curb, with the poles already installed, which I mentioned, there was a suggestion, actually, if I want to add, like, you know, landscaping, which there's poles. So nothing really needs to be done. So all the safety measures have been taken and considered in the application and in the discussion that we had that night. And I agreed, if I'm not wrong, I agree on ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent on all the recommendations that the neighbors suggested and the the committee actually suggested.
One quick question, follow-up.
Yes, sir.
On your pickup window, you're you're not going to have any speaker at all? You're just simply going to talk through the window itself?
Exactly. It's just a sliding window. I think Ely Drugs, I mean, most of the local pharmacies, they do that. It's just a slide window. Open it. You handle it.
Not a speaker of any kind?
At all. And this is actually in the application. Like I can be held accountable if I add any kind of that. Even the sign, which is part of this, I'm sorry, Mr. Joe, let me add this. Even the sign of the pharmacy, I suggested that it would be on the left far side or like the west side of the property. So if you're leaving the neighborhood, there will be no sign blocking your view. It will be all the way on the other side, next to the Hope Bridge property. So I really took and added and made sure I put myself there, my kids in the backseat. If I'm leaving that property, what would really protect me? And I made sure it's in the application.
Yeah. Did I hear you say you you have bought the property next door?
We're actually, we're actually in the process.
From the gentleman in the yellow?
From the from the owner of the property, Mr. Wickerham. Rent the house.
Who's in the yellow shirt?
It's Mr. Mike Coffey, BG Reynolds, that owns the house. And I can I can prove it with text, and I just had CMS roofing that.
We're not going in there. I asked the wrong question.
I'm sorry. It's just.
But it's in my mind.
Yes.
So you need to remove it from your mind.
I'm happy to answer any question. I'm I'm open, just like an open book. Any any information request, I'll be more than happy to.
I appreciate that.
We can only consider what's in the record, so.
Yeah.
Drop, drop it out of your mind, Joe.
I'm, I'm reading the record.
Okay. Did you have anything else, sir?
If anybody had any question, please, it's, it's my honor to answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One, one, one more question. One more.
Yes, sir.
Your building is high far from your property line. Ben? His building, the side that is touching the house in the back, whoever owns the house in the back, I'm not interested in, but that property line, how far is his building from that property line? Ten feet.
The fence, eight-foot fence.
Eight-foot fence, any shrubbery or anything?
With landscaping on my side. But it would be eight-foot wood fence. This is what they recommended, and I, I agreed to put eight-foot fence, yes. I don't know if you, do you have the, the plan?
Do.
Okay.
Oh, I have, Mayor.
Sure.
Any other questions, sir? Thank you.
Last chance. Okay, thank you.
Okay, right, right now, we have the opportunity to discuss or make any comments before we ask for a vote, so this would be your opportunity.
I would like to make a couple of comments. Mr. Telys, I want to say that I have been so impressed by you, and I love your story and your family's story, and you're the kind of citizen that we want to help bring back and to help thrive and be an entrepreneur to serve the city. So, I am rooting for you and excited for you and your family, and I hope, you know, I'm excited for your future and hope it all works out eventually. My struggle is with this particular location and my responsibility to the neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are such an incredible part of our life. It's the place where we go back to restore ourselves from our crazy day. It's the place where kids are learning how to ride their bike, where seniors are getting their much-needed exercise to be able to live a long and happy life. And Whispering Hills is, have been impacted by growth, our tremendous growth of our city and by traffic. And I would listen to everyone's testimony at both of the hearings. I was definitely moved by all of the testimony, especially the dad who talked about how he even has to be worried about getting hit by a car while he's waiting for the school bus. And I think when we're talking about that level of impact on a neighborhood, that we really do have to really take that into serious consideration in terms of putting even more impact and traffic and the ways in which that our growth is going to negatively impact it, is going to help improve and protect a neighborhood and the kids who live there and the seniors who live there? Is it going to increase their health and safety, or is it going to, you know, decrease it? And that's part of, the decision I had to be made is based on a comprehensive plan and the principles outlined in that. And those are part of big reasons that they list, that I have to make my decision on. So, when I make my vote, it is going to, to be based on the comprehensive plan, principles put in front of me in terms of protecting neighborhoods. But I want you to know that I definitely support you, and I hope everything works out for you, and I'll be looking to see, hopefully, things will work out in the future. Thank you.
Other comments?
I echo what Commissioner Beasley-Brown had to say, in that I wish you much success. Being a small business owner is a tough gig. Building one from the ground up is, is even tougher. Having said that, and reviewing the record and visiting the site, and I went and visited the site, I want to be transparent that I did live in the neighborhood for fourteen or fifteen years. I'm very familiar with the piece of property that you're talking about. But, but today, I drove out and sat there for a while on both sides of the street. And in fact, the, the posts that you talk about are in that area because we had such difficulty with cars driving through the boulevard, the grassy area, because they didn't want to follow the traffic patterns. I don't remember exactly who installed those, but there was a gentleman named Jack Neal who used to live at the front of the neighborhood, who passed away just a few months ago, if I'm correct. And I stopped one day and helped him reinstall those posts when I lived there. So, they've been there a number of years. I just do not believe that what you're proposing for this particular piece of property is compatible with the other pieces of property that are around it. That's not a slight against you, it's not a slight against your business, it's not intended to be. I want to see businesses thrive and grow in Bowling Green, but from this seat, it's important that, from my perspective, that we make sure that that is smart growth and it's growth based upon compatibleness, if that's a word, that, that it's all fitting together well and we're not just growing to grow. Growing to grow, we, we have lots of those communities in this country, and they're a disaster. They're difficult to live in, they're difficult to visit, they're difficult to do business in because there was not a plan related to that growth. I want there to be smart growth a, as we continue to grow in Bowling Green. And while I think you are a, a smart businessperson, and I think your business will do well in this particular property, I will be voting no, because it's not compatible with the existing properties that are around it. Nothing further.
Yeah, I appreciate the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, I, I recognize and have worked with several of those folks out there and at Western, so. And Mr. Telys, yeah, congratulations on, on deciding to come back to Bowling Green and move in your family, thank you. My, I understand both sides of this argument. We do have what's called a really good problem here in Bowling Green. We're growing. Lots of communities can't say that. Managed growth is, is definitely the way to go. It's important that we take all these things into consideration. But I want everybody to understand where my vote is coming from, is with the, with the support and the confidence in the carefully picked commissioners that we choose for our Planning and Zoning Board. There is a specific reason why we aren't the Planning and Zoning Board. Those folks, that's, that's why they're in place, is to, is to bring these recommendations to us. And from what I understand about this whole process, is that upfront, and Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the Planning and Zoning folks work with a developer or a person that has an interest in rezoning something or locating a business somewhere and it needs to be rezoned, that they get a lot of the work done upfront so that your application would actually get in front of Planning and Zoning folks. And so, it, it came before the carefully picked commissioners, that if, if we don't have confidence in our commissioners, then we need to replace them. I feel like we have confidence in our commissioners, and, and I know that, that the county judge and, and the mayor don't just put anybody on any board. They're, they're carefully selected because of who they are, what their expertise is, or their willingness to serve. It's a really tough board to serve on, an extremely tough board to serve on. We think we have it rough, but I think they have it rougher. So, with all that being said, I, I understand that it came before the commission, there was a tie vote, there was a lot of ask from the neighborhood to Mr. Telys to concede on a lot of things that, you know, we can see here in the notes, and he, he, he granted everything he was asked of. And then, there was another vote, and that vote was seven to three. So, for me to tell the majority vote of the planning commission that they got it wrong would be, it's just impossible for me to do that. So, you know, that's their world, and when they come to you, if it was, if it came to us as a five-five, that's a whole different situation. But it's not. It's a majority vote of our planning commission that we have entrusted to do this work, to bring us, this board, their recommendation. So, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Question for commission.
Does that mean that you would never overrule the planning commission?
I can't say ever, never. Nobody ever says never.
Have you ever, have you ever overruled the planning commission?
I don't believe I voted to overrule. I can't, can't recall if I did.
Any comments? All right, the, a yes vote will be to approve the recommendation for rezoning this piece of property. Please call a roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the first vote and a second, actually, the first vote doesn't count for anything other than makes us feel like we did something tonight, but the second vote is what will count, and it will be on the first meeting, first Tuesday in October, which is October what?
First.
October first. So, if there's an issue you want to deal with between now and then, you have those two weeks to, to deal with. Thank you very much, all right. Next item is first reading of ordinance BG 201941.
Ordinance closing public rights of way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of an unimproved right-of-way bounded by Park Street, High Street, Cabell Drive, and East Fourteenth Avenue, and further closing an unimproved right-of-way on a portion of East Fifteenth Avenue off of High Street.
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Paragon, second by Denning.
This was a, excuse me, this is a request from the Planning and Zoning to close a portion of an alley right-of-way. This is pertaining to the new parking lot for WKU between High Street and Park Street that recently was constructed. In your package, you'll see the maps of what this involves, the, the areas and all of the sign-offs from different parties for closing this right-of-way. And I guess Ben can answer questions if you have any on this item.
Comments or questions?
Who? I know that Western owns the property that is bordering Park Street. Do they, do they own on this side too, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Wanted to make sure.
If you go to the next, you can see the darker areas, what they've all purchased and already paved.
All of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Already paved and all.
It's already paved and parking on it, so.
Oh, I see, I see. I didn't, I, I saw that map, I didn't understand. Got it.
It's lined up just about like the map.
The black part's basically the parking lot.
I guess we could leave it open, then they'd want us to pave part of their drive lanes, so. I want to vote yes. Please call a roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 201942.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to Windstream Kentucky East LLC for the use of rights-of-way for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Mr. Mizel.
Believe this is our second one of these telecommunications franchises, and basically we are going to, or they're asking you all for the permission, Windstream Kentucky East LLC, to use right-aways for the operation and maintenance of their non-cable telecommunications systems. This could be fiber, anything like that, that's, that's non-cable, non-TV related items. We do have a separate cable franchise that you would have to apply for if you're proposing to do cable TV services. Gene worked on this franchise agreement, it's a ten-year agreement with Windstream, giving them the privilege of constructing, operating, maintaining a communication system, it's non-cable within the rights-of-way in the city in accordance with the terms of this ordinance. And Gene can answer any questions you may have. Gene, do you have anything to add to, to this?
But this company could also, at some point in time, request to start up a cable system, television, right?
They would have to come back and apply for a cable franchise agreement.
Yes, they could. In fact, they're providing cable service in Lexington right now, but if they wanted to do that, they could, they just have to come back in and, and get a separate, different one. In fact, Windstream right now is already here. I think they found out and, and got those too late to hit the deadline for the first one, but they already have some lines in, in place already in the city, so that's why they need this franchise agreement, so they make sure they're, they're compliant with all of our rules and regulations.
Let's hope they desire, at some point in time, to start a cable TV system. You know what I mean?
But this does allow them to do internet, correct?
Yes, I think, right now, my understanding is they're not providing, I think, any residential service. I think they're just providing some service to some commercial customers in the town, but this would allow them to provide telephone and internet service if they chose to take that route throughout the city.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Last voting item on our agenda, we have time for our public comments. I'll call you up to the microphone, remind you that you have three minutes, they've got a lot of people tonight, so. Let's see. All right, Jennifer Moreland, you're first.
Hello, city commissioners, how you doing? Good?
How are you?
Good. I'm going through a lot, but God is good all the time. Okay, remember what I was talking about two, two weeks ago about the hottest-hit program? Well, I found another program that you might not know about it, and I have the information if you're interested. And it does the same thing, it's just right now, they don't have it in, they don't have it for this county. They have it for a Christian county, because it's low poverty level, but what I would like to do is bring it to this county. Now, what it would do, it would help people buy a home and help people pay for their mortgage. And we need it for our veterans, and we need it for people who cannot afford their mortgages. Now, I'm asking you to find it in your heart to have a special funding to help, help people pay mortgages. They say the city's broke, and I don't believe that, but I would like to see, I don't believe that it's broke. I believe you can find the funding in your budget to help these people. These people are hurting right now. And what I would like for you to do, because I know you're never going to pass fairness, it has to be after you get unelected, but what I would like for you to do is fast, just like how David fasted in the Bible. Before you say no to this answer, I want you to fast. And it sounds crazy, but you don't have to fast a meal, all you have to do is fast soda. Don't drink soda for a whole day.
Okay, I'm, I'm more on the board with you now, Jennifer, keep going.
So, fasting would help make decisions that God wants, because if God gives you the power to give up soda for a day, imagine what God can do. You know, and that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, to answer these questions, why don't you fast? And everybody fasted. Peter, John, all the disciples fasted when Jesus was crucified on the cross. So, if they were doing something wrong, then why did they do it?
Jennifer, may I have a copy?
There is no doubt, God is a miracle worker. No doubt about it. I just wanted to clarify one thing that she said, and I'm through. The city of Bowling Green is not broke, but we are spending our money wisely. We are able to pay our bills, we're able to buy fire trucks, we're able to buy what our employees need in order to perform their daily tasks. So, let it not be heard by any that the city of Bowling Green is broke. Thank you, Mayor. I hate to say that. I know I talked too long, but I'm through for the evening.
Ms. Christmas, it's your.
My name is Teresa Christmas, and my husband and I came out of the push-in building on Main Street recently to find a local business owner yelling at a homeless man who could barely walk with his cane. He was yelling so much that the homeless man was crying and shaking and looked as though he might pass out. My husband put his arm around the homeless man and helped him to sit down on the sidewalk. A lady stuck her head out of the push-in building and beckoned to me to come over to her. She said, "I have been here the whole time, and I can tell you that that man with the cane did absolutely nothing wrong. That other man," she pointed to the business owner, "he is drunk, it was not even noon yet." My husband and I wound up taking the man with the cane to nearby coffee shop. A woman who works at the coffee shop told me that the very same business owner had been in the coffee shop earlier, and they'd asked him to leave because of his behavior. The moral of my story is, what is better to see on Main Street? A drunk business owner who is being belligerent, or a timid polite man with a disability who is down on his luck? I know that this is not an isolated incident, there are many stories about the mistreatment of homeless people, but I'm not alone when I say that the signs that the city has put up kind of encourage people like the businessman to feel that he has a right to bully a poor homeless man. I don't exactly know the story behind why the city put up these, these signs, but there are no signs like these in other cities. Atlanta doesn't have any signs like this, they have a large homeless population, Nashville doesn't have any signs like, like these. But I, I, I'm here now on behalf of others in our community who had signed a statement on social media to say that, that this is not a solution to the homeless situation in our community. The signs do not reflect how we feel about homelessness and do not offer any solutions. There's been a lot of discussion about the homeless situation in our community on social media, and I, I did cut and paste some comments that people made, local people who made suggestions for their own signs, or they suggested other things that are done in other cities and could be done here that would help the homeless situation. It's my hope to ask that we respectfully open a necessary dialogue about homelessness in our community. A lot has come to my attention because I spend a lot of time on Main Street, because that's where my own business is, and there are individuals who volunteer their time, and even a group that is calling itself Fountain Square Homeless Committee, and they're seeking to help. I feel that if the entire city doesn't work together, however, to seek solutions, then we're working at cross purposes. Tonight is just the beginning of a dialogue about homelessness and healthy homes in our community, and we hope to continue this conversation. I just want to add one thing, right before I got here, I finally got a return phone call from a woman in Nashville, her name is Lindsay Fricks, and she began a program called The Open Table in Nashville in 2010, they're first responders that help connect homeless people with resources in their community. She said that the first thing that they had to do.
Ms. Christmas, I'm sorry, time's expired.
Ms. Christmas, may I have those comments?
Oh, sure, thank you so much. Yes. Thank you.
Grambling?
Michael Grambling, co-owner of Art Matters 310 East Main. I've had, I've had the good fortune to get to know lots of people in the downtown area who count on the kindness of strangers to get them through the day, and I've developed a deep respect for their resilience and determination. I've poured concrete for a living, cut tobacco in the summer heat, but I've never had to stand on a corner holding a cardboard sign in the hot sun all day, invisible to everyone who pass by, indifferent to my suffering. I think it's a lot harder than pouring concrete, and so if it is so hard, why don't these folks just get real jobs? Simple arithmetic. According to the Census Bureau, there are nearly twenty-two thousand working age people in Bowling Green who do not have jobs. There are currently only twenty-three hundred jobs available. The poverty rate in Bowling Green for persons not working is fifty-three percent. Poverty is both an outcome and a cause for my friend's circumstances. You can't get a job unless you have a car, a telephone, and a home address, you can't get any of those things unless you have a job. And even if you have a place to live, it's small comfort to the thirty-eight percent of renters who are extremely rent burdened and in imminent danger of eviction on a monthly basis. Eviction is a life-changing event that can throw your life into a downward spiral from which recovery is nearly impossible. But that's not all, people don't work for lots of reasons, mothers of young children with no childcare, people with mental health issues or physical illness who have no access to treatment, people who struggle with addiction, food insecurity, hunger will put you out on the street for help, asking for help quicker than most anything else. The city cannot address all of this single-handedly, but it could take leadership, it could provide resources and protection. Affordable housing, renters' rights would be a good start. Teresa and I tried to help an evicted homeless gentleman get to see his doctor. We made the appointment, but when we went to get him, he'd been arrested because he was sitting in a public park that he had been warned to stay out of. His crime evidently was that his body was taking up space that belonged to the city, his crime was that he was breathing the city's air. And then, of course, there are the signs. Panhandling is dangerous. Change the way you give, wow, so much said in so few words, so much left unsaid. I did not heed the warning nor follow its advice, but since the city took the time and spent the money to look out for my well-being, I have adopted its format to return the favor. City of Bowling Green, poverty is life-threatening and dehumanizing. Change the way you spend our money. Thank you.
David. Mr. Coverdale.
I know each of you commissioners, and, and we have had a great opportunity to talk with each of you at different times. What I'm speaking to about today is the condition of our homeless, I work with them daily, I'm retired now, I give them rides, I take, I do the things that give them legs to get around, and have gotten to know a lot of them, and I guess that's one I wanted to talk to you a little bit about today. I work with Room at the Inn primarily, and with my own Presbyterian church, and, in order to try to, to ease the pain that some of them live in. I'd be more than glad to relate, relate some of these stories at another point in time, because I don't want to take your time with them, but there are a whole lot of people in this community that are working hard to help people, but we are finding less and less answers. And I agree with Teresa that we need to have a dialogue, an ongoing dialogue, because it's just not right to continually tell people, "You can't sleep there," or "You can't be there." Hubert Humphrey once said that the, the, uh, the community is best defined by the way that they treat the least of their citizens, and I think that's a wonderful way of saying, because that's the way we need to be looking, because they are here, that's not going to change, we all know that, we take care of them, we work with them on a daily basis, we work as hard as we can, I have a great success story just from yesterday that I would share with you at, at another point in time, but my, my real point is, is just that we have to start this dialogue, we have to provide places to go to the bathroom, for, we allow, we have to do some things to give people and help them find and maintain their personal dignity. Thank you.
Ms. Severance? Ms. Severance?
Good afternoon, I just want to ask that our city commissioners think about the message that the signs give, it's a very unfriendly message, a very negative message, and I would ask that the signs be taken, taken down that are currently up, and consider replacing them with something like mini food pantries or something like that, but something that gives a positive message to our citizens, because we want to be seen as a city that cares about everyone. Thank you.
What signs are you talking about in location?
The signs about panhandling to not give to panhandlers, it just gives people permission to be ugly, you know, in a time when we don't need to encourage that.
Sorry, before I began to, I did want to add, as this, I'm speaking on behalf of fairness, my name is Jay Wells, it's great to meet you all, but I did want to mention before I began that I've been homeless, I've been, Mr. Nash actually had interviewed with me a few years ago when I was going through a bit of a housing crisis, the vast majority of my good friends that are non-binary, trans, or are part of the LGBTQ spectrum have, deal with this kind of situation, so that sign doesn't just speak to those that are houseless or homeless, but the insecure and those that are cow-chopping. They come in different forms, different shapes, on, on, off hormones, and I want to, I just wanted to remind you that the majority of my friends are only a skin, only, only a tad, only an inch away from being on the street, so just keep that in mind, this does reflect every single person. Hello, my, hello commissioners, my name is Jay Wells, I've been a resident of Bowling Green, Kentucky for nearly five years. I consider Bowling Green my adopted hometown. It's a city where I came out of the closet as a non-binary and bisexual person. It's not a place, however, more my civil rights as a queer person are protected in housing or employment. Every year, more and more cities in Kentucky like Georgetown, like Georgetown, Kentucky, who this month decided in a five-three decision to pass the fairness ordinance, have decided, have decided to honor, have decided to honor their queer, their queer residents' civil rights. Bowling Green is falling behind these cities. Georgetown was the second city in the same month to, to pass the fairness ordinance. Bowling Green is an economic engine for South Central Kentucky, it is the fastest growing, growing city in industry and population in Kentucky, yet despite these achievements, Bowling Green is still overshadowed by other cities in, in, where it matters most, protecting its citizens. We, the queer community, often suffer in silence in work and housing, hiding our identities and who we love out of fear of being cast out into the streets by our landlords and our employee, and our employers. We will continue to fight for an ordinance that prevents this from being the case, for a fair future in which citizens of this city don't have to hide who they, who they are for several, for several, for several survival, pardon me. I would encourage you commissioners to take the time to come to Bowling Green Pride on October 5th, and ask questions to your queer constituents, ask them about their struggles, their worries, and their anxieties they face daily when they go to work, or when, or when they pay rent. Ask them if they have, if, if they felt the need to hide who they are for their safety in these situations. I think the answers you hear, you will hear, you will hear time and time again will confirm that their fears are real. Only you have the power to put their minds at ease by passing this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Francisco.
Hello, Francisco Serrano, 572 Moss Creek Avenue. On September 7th, around 3:00 PM, I witnessed an incident that I had never seen before in the city of Bowling Green. In my whole lifetime living here, twenty-four years, my whole, entire life, I witnessed a police officer pull over on the busy, busy Scottsville Road to yell at an older gentleman and his mother who only has one leg and is confined to a wheelchair, to yell at them and tell them to leave the sidewalk, or they would be arrested. I later spoke to those people after the incident had happened, because I was shocked, I didn't know what had just happened, and I wanted to make sure that these people were all right, and to see if they needed anything. Come to find out, they were just trying to get some money so that they could get a hotel room to spend the night. And I wanted to share that story to you, with you all, because becoming homeless can happen to anyone, can happen to your neighbor, your family members, your church members, even you. We all know that homelessness is a problem in our community, but let's go back to imagining that you were a loved one, was down on their luck, and became homeless. Imagine that you, or that they, or you yourself had to resort to asking for food, water, and funds to survive. This is exactly what is happening to people in our community now, and particularly our impoverished communities. They are suffering, and we are not addressing the issue at large. The signs placed and ordinances passed have only helped cultivate a toxic culture in our community, people harassing others, treating them as less than the person, and ultimately not solving the homelessness problem in Bowling Green. This police officer incident that I witnessed actually motivated me to apply for the Bowling Green Police Department, and the reason why is because I don't want to see police officers, and I don't want to be a police officer that actually harasses people that way. I want to be a police officer that actually, just as Ms. Teresa was talking about, will guide people to the resources in order to get out of the situations that they are in. I want to leave you all with just a few simple questions before I go. If you were to see me down on my luck, asking for help, would you all arrest me? Would you ignore me? Would you treat me as less than a human being? Let's stop pretending that we have fixed the issue here with these signs and ignoring the issue, and let's actually help out our fellow human beings. Thank you.
Our next scheduled meeting is October 1st, 2019, thank you.
Mayor, may I just ask a question?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, so since the folks brought up just several instances of interacting with city staff and the signs, I just had a question in terms of, for Jeff and maybe Brent, is there a place, because I know we're already hosting a question related to the housing market study on increasing affordable housing, but it's a little bit separate issue than homelessness and how we're handling the problem of that crisis, so would, would we be open to also maybe hosting a conversation around how we handle homelessness as city staff from multiple departments, where that's parks and police and all of those things, and then the signs in general, having a place outside of this to, to figure out what we want to do in response?
Yes, we would be open to that, we, Brent and I have met with the Coalition a few times and working with, there's many, many partners in town, Hotel Inc., Room at the Inn, lots of resources. It's, it's a matter of, like one gentleman said about, matter of engaging these people, getting them in and getting them to acknowledge that there are places they can go and get help and get jobs and get trained. We have a workforce development board now that has money, federal money, to train, and it's, it's free to go get trained for a job, we have places for, for transportation to get people transportation. The reason for the signs is that there is a difference between panhandling and homelessness and homeless, and there are statistics that say that twenty percent or less of the homeless do not panhandle. Those people that are out panhandling are not homeless, they go back to homes and they're conning people, and they're con artists, and they're collecting money.
Let me interrupt you there, we don't, we don't engage in activity that prohibits people from panhandling.
We don't.
The, the signs are there to keep people from stepping out in the street, that's what makes it unsafe.
Right.
And you don't want anyone approaching you in a vehicle, either in the road or somebody you don't know, so that's the purpose of the unsafeness, and we don't discriminate with regard to what they have to say.
And those signs were not at all in any way intended for the homeless, there, there, there's two different groups that people have to realize that exist, there's the panhandlers that are not homeless, they're traveling around making money, begging for money and going to the next town and, and taking advantage of people, and then, then there's the true homeless that are out there that we need to help, so that's what we want to work on, and we're willing to do everything we can to help those folks and get those back, those folks back on their feet, get them a place to live. Brent's working, we've, we've got the housing study we've looked at, he's talked to the Home Builders Association, there are things in the works, I think, for affordable homes that, that are underway, so, but yeah, we're willing to do anything you all want us to do and, and meet whatever.
So, are you saying that we can maybe have a follow-up conversation, it sounds like you, working with the Homeless and Housing Coalition, with the police department and the Parks Department, and I guess whoever's over the signs, to just give folks a place to, to give feedback?
Right, mm-hmm.
I would also suggest that maybe some of the other members who suffer should be part of those meetings.
Any, anyone's welcome to be a part of those meetings, Ms. Christmas, they, the... They, the, the homeless coalition meets, the homeless coalition meets week, monthly, and, and you're always welcome to attend that. The city participates that through Karen Foley and, so.
We can, we, we'll work on that, yeah, absolutely. Call us and tell us you want to be on that list, or for, you'll get, put, put you on the email list, it's Karen Foley, it's Rondell at, at Hotel Inc., and many, many others, so, the more the merrier, we, we can use all the help we can get.
And if a citizen wants to participate, if you want to email me or call me, my, I can give you my information tonight, or you can find it online, I'm happy to make sure you make it to the meeting.
Thank you so much. The meeting, next meeting's October 1st, Tuesday, 2019.